This conference will now be recorded.
Approve the budget amendment.
The amendment of the 2024 budget.
The amendment of the 2024 budget.
There is no additional. When you talk about the money, there's expenses, right? And those are less than these particular numbers.
So the funds, special highway fund already has this amount of money in it, which is supporting the expenditure.
Yes, that's correct. And we're spending somewhere in the 469,000 range, not the 725,000. That money's there. It's a matter of like I explained, is that we just don't want to have any surprises. We surprise in the next 15 or so days, and then maybe after some bill that we just kind of forgot about, or something caught us off guard. And so we don't violate that too much. So we put it pretty far out there. This is the same principle we used in the budget for 2025, and we did it this summer. Same principle. Just really cautious.
And so what you said, the public comments.
Public comments.
And then.
Yes. Would you open the public comments in any of those discussions? So essentially, you would open the public hearing portion, then entertain the comments, close it, and then you move to motion a second, then the discussion happens. So that's when we would have that, that's the order.
And we just opened the public comment section for the public meeting, that was the councilman Schreiber and Bishop votes. So we can, if anyone's here for a public comment, they can up their shout for us. So we'll just have the motion to close the public comment then?
Yes.
Make the motion to close the public comment. Do the motion from councilman Schreiber and a second from councilman Bishop, vote for a first please call roll.
Bishop. Malat. Schreiber. Adcox. Mullen.
And now if we council all the comments for questions?
You'll either take a motion to amend the budget for 2024.
I just wanted to ask that this project, this budget is 400,000 for three for 2024. Correct? Not the budget we didn't have? And the new budget could be just about 400,000.
No, it's more than that.
It is more than that.
I don't know that number. I don't know why 400,000. This is cool, I mean, this will be the same thing for next year, where this goes through the same process next year.
We should not have to, because again, the adopted principle of putting these maximum budgets out there, where we have this large authority, but the expenses, of course, come through the year. All right? We may have a plan that says we're going to spend 400,000, but you may want to say, well, we only want you to spend 300,000, even though our budget is 700,000. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, but I just thought that, I even thought that I even made a motion to do about 400,000 for three.
Certainly not that old. I think though, from council background that we provided, we were targeting about 400,000 in street maintenance projects. It was actually much more than that, but we toned it back because we needed to stay within a reasonable budget.
Was that when we were doing the 110th street, and then we had that like grouping of projects, was that 400,000?
Yes, that's the street maintenance plan for 2024, that was in summer. Summer.
I will make the motion to approve the amendment of the 2024 budget. The amendment of the 2024 budget.
Second.
Do we have a motion from councilman Malat, that is second from councilman Bishop, who will refer, please call roll?
Bishop. Malat. Schreiber. Adcox. Mullen.
Item number four, consider resolution 2024-14, a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million principal debt of general obligations covering the city.
Okay, sorry. You go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, mayor council, raise your attention to the resolution 2024-14. This is a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million dollars of general obligations covering the city. This resolution for approval will allow the city to secure funding for a competitive sale on February 24, 2025, with a projected interest rate of 3.5%. Proceeds will support short-term financing needs while allowing future permanent bond financing flexibility after the final project costs are determined. The resolution also enables designated city officials to take necessary actions to facilitate the sale and subsequent closing on March 2025. Staff is recommending the city council adopt the reservation.
You got to ask, what is, what is bond council charging for all of this? Is it a percentage, or is it a set fee?
I don't know. It's a percentage.
It's like a, you know, this amount of this for the fee, it just keeps getting larger by the 75,000.
I think in some of the background, we discussed that part of the temporary financing is just that, and then we go to permanent, so you have fees in there. So that was one of the tasks that I listed, because we knew that from experience. But if you saw from Lady Kelly, who provided a planned background, we've included that summary in the packet, which this is the route in which we strongly advise that we take. This is the most flexibility, right now it's economically feasible, it's the best approach, that later that we could take these temporary notes and turn into permanent financing, when we know the actual cost. I think that's a point.
Is there no other questions in here, or no further, related to 2024 and 14?
With the needs for these facilities, as extreme as they are, and the ones we've been discussing in this project, and the work that's been done from the past until now, I would like to make the motion to consider resolution 2024-14. Resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million principal debt of general obligations covering the city.
Do we have a motion from councilman Malat, a second from councilman Bishop, who will refer, please call roll?
Bishop. Malat. Schreiber. Adcox. Mullen.
Item number four, consider resolution 2024-14, a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million principal debt of general obligations covering the city.
Okay, sorry. You go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, mayor council, raise your attention to the resolution 2024-14. This is a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million dollars of general obligations covering the city. This resolution for approval will allow the city to secure funding for a competitive sale on February 24, 2025, with a projected interest rate of 3.5%. Proceeds will support short-term financing needs while allowing future permanent bond financing flexibility after the final project costs are determined. The resolution also enables designated city officials to take necessary actions to facilitate the sale and subsequent closing on March 2025. Staff is recommending the city council adopt the reservation.
You got to ask, what is, what is bond council charging for all of this? Is it a percentage, or is it a set fee?
I don't know. It's a percentage.
It's like a, a, you know, this amount of this for the fee, it just keeps getting larger by the 75,000.
I think in some of the background, we discussed that part of the temporary financing is just that, and then we go to permanent, so you have fees in there. So that was one of the tasks that I listed, because we knew that from experience. But if you saw from Lady Kelly, who provided a planned background, we've included that summary in the packet, which this is the route in which we strongly advise that we take. This is the most flexibility, right now it's economically feasible, it's the best approach, that later that we could take these temporary notes and turn into permanent financing, when we know the actual cost. I think that's a point.
Is there no other questions in here, or no further, related to 2024 and 14?
With the needs for these facilities, as extreme as they are, and the ones we've been discussing in this project, and the work that's been done from the past until now, I would like to make the motion to consider resolution 2024-14. Resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately 16 million principal debt of general obligations covering the city.
Do we have a motion from councilman Malat, a second from councilman Schreiber, who will refer, please call roll?
Bishop. Malat. Schreiber. Adcox. Mullen. With the needs for these facilities, as extreme as they are, and as long as we've been discussing this project, I've worked with them from the past until now. I would like to make the motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. Resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately sixteen million dollars of general obligation and temporary notes on the city.
Do the motion from Councilman Malat, the second from Councilman Schreiber, will the first please call roll?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Item number five, consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, a resolution re conveying property located at twenty-five fifty-two South ninety-eight Street. A property, a property affiliated with the city's industrial revenue bonds.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Council, drawing your attention to resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. This is a reconveyance of property located at twenty-five fifty-two South ninety-eight Street. Specifically financed through industrial revenue bonds. Essentially what happens is we issue the bonds and they move into pilot and the title is then in the city government's name. Uh, on the expiration of that pilot and all of that money up to date. Then it's, the next process is to return that title to the leasee, uh, leaseholder, I'm sorry, which is Mount Edwardville K S L L C. It's a fairly complex, who, who was in charge at the time, they, they, they transferred that title several times to that financing business. So this is the last piece of this, uh, in, in that the IRBs are expired, they are already on the tax rolls, I assure that this summer. And, uh, essentially this is our last, uh, action that we need to take on this. Return the title then to Mount Edwardville, uh, K S L L C, and, and as they have opted to go ahead and make the purchase. Yeah, they're already being taxed as of this year.
What do they refer to?
This name is, there's O B P, and you, you see the Mount Edwardville, K S L L C, there's even another name mixed in, all of that. No, expedens? I'm, I'm sorry, I just didn't think you'd know what I mean there. Is this one just north of, uh, two, two five, two South ninety-eight Street?
That'd be close.
Yeah. It's going to be on the inside. I would use a computer, but.
It's, it's V E R I T I D, I don't know. Yeah, it's packing and print, packing and printing.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John Paul.
You're welcome.
Is there no other questions? Whether or not you want to approve, whether or not you want to approve the twenty twenty-four and fifteen?
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, reclaim, reconveying property back at twenty-five fifty-two South ninety-eight.
Do the motion from Councilman Bishop, uh, second, and Councilman Malat, will the first please call roll?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat. Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Moving right along to item number six on the agenda, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a master service agreement for on-call engineering services with professional engineering consultants.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, drawing your attention to, uh, a recommendation from staff that we enter into a, a master service agreement with professional engineering consultants, P A, which is P E C. You might recognize that name. They are the engineering firm who, uh, uh, we have already a contract with for our planning and zoning. Uh, we spoke to them, uh, extensively on a number of topics, including the planning and zoning, and got to know their philosophy and kind of, uh, what services they could deliver. Uh, we think we have a good relationship, uh, with this firm and those who are, uh, currently representing it. And we hope they stay involved with us as well, uh, and their services, uh, are, are going to be well received in, uh, in hopes, uh, that we can take on some different projects. With a different perspective is really what we're looking for, not to disparage our current provider, V H C. Uh, we, we just don't make a complete break from a firm like this. V H C is well rooted into a number of large projects that we have and essentially it's kind of a professional standard that they've designed so much, right? Uh, that sixty percent above, the other firms want to stay away from that with, because they want to do it over themselves. They don't want to guarantee somebody else's work, does that make sense? And so their, so the recommendation is we stay and leave V H C in the, in the, on the projects that they have. And that we move forward with some of our on-call services, which is when we need, uh, an engineering about a certain section of road or some curves or these other things that we just generally use and we need questions answered. They provide some of this detail as the city engineer, that's what they will be provided to us. And then it does not exempt them from coming forward and saying, we would like to have the project, and here's our bid. So that's when we incur only cost in which we, uh, you know, authorize them to, on the projects to do any work. So that's essentially what it is. Uh, for your convenience, I showed you the price differences and, and it's surprisingly good, we like that too, well, save a little money. Get a different perspective and that's all we're trying to accomplish today.
How about a little bit of this, we, we set that, currently, the, the works for down there?
Uh, yes, we retain contractually with P E C for a planning and zoning coordinator, if you will. So our planning and zoning, our, uh, planner, the city planner is Kyle Kobe with P E C. And so we. Did you do that this summer? Yeah, this summer, sometime in twenty twenty-four.
It was July or August after Bradley left.
Is that it, yeah? Oh, no, sorry. It was in the summer, yes. Sorry. But I will, I would like to, Mayor, very quickly introduce, uh, Alex Darby from P E C, who's been in our form of contact and, and you wanted to say greetings and can you have a face and name?
Yes, so my name is Alex Darby, I am our vice president of municipal services. Uh, so the only work that I do is work with cities, counties, boroughs. So, um, very familiar with, with working with cities and, and other communities and how we accomplish those projects in those city ways and the, so. Cal Flank here is our vice president of community engagement. Um, so he is also in the area and here to how we, how we serve the city as well. So I would be excited to, to work with the city.
Uh, we, we have spoken extensively with them about knowing our payment, uh, condition index, C I L A C, which we desperately need to be able to know what to spend our, our capital money on. High special highway funds, that's what we need. Uh, so that's something that we're commissioned. What I like about this relationship is we consolidate some of the, we don't have so many people, firms and managers and then that's better for us as well.
I'll make the motion to agree with, uh, engineering consultants with, uh, P E C.
Do the motion from Councilman Bishop, a second from Councilman Mullen, will the first please call roll?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat. Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Thank you.
Congratulations, right?
Yeah, welcome to work.
Uh, moving on to item seven, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with people willing to architect or to write for, or to supply, and help us services specifically to the city's facilities.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Council, uh, I, I received late notice that people may not be able to represent their members in this. And if we have somebody to know that will turn in that, uh, essentially, you have the background, you have the contracts, but what you can do, you have three options. You can, first, you can table this, wait till, wait till January. Uh, you can prove it as you, as the background presented and, and you just won't have opportunity to question, uh, them in person. Or, or you can deny altogether and you can start contracts and go out working for them. Or you can tell me to do something else. What would then you do? Yes?
I did want to, uh, this is it. Everything's like quite good money, you know, it's, it's always a large investment. And so I wanted to clarify, this is all inclusive, but we're not going to rebuild or anything else, uh, including the landscaping where we talked about last time, that walkway. That's been in our design plan since the beginning for the, the small water feature, like that's been in, we talked about. Is that inclusive or are we going to get deemed, um, additionally for bills on that?
Here's what I understood from, you posed that question and her answer was, those are some of the things you wait, lay into the project to add. Maybe there's overrun to decide to wait on that particular piece, it was just their thoughts. So I don't know the true answer of, does, is this all included? Uh, their services are project administration, design development, drafting construction documents and obtaining necessary permits, that sort of thing. That's what this ser, scope of service list that they're, they're going to do. So I think if we really have those questions, we should pose them to them in person in January. So, yeah.
I feel like.
Oh, I can do it.
I'd like to make the motion to table item number seven, if you have people who is, not personally, but second.
Do the, uh, motion from Councilman Bishop, a second from Councilman Mullen, will the first please call roll?
Bishop.
Uh, yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Yes. Just to clarify, she could not be.
Right, yes.
Yes. She's well invested. Yes.
Um, we're going to, uh, pop back up, I believe to, I don't want to see.
I'm going to say, are you ready for that? We have printed documents?
I'm waiting on the email to, so I can print, I was in there trying to do it, sorry.
Yeah, if you can do this, go to city manager.
If you could.
But they need documents in front of them.
Right, I'm, I'm going to print them once they come through.
City manager's report, thank you, Mayor, uh, I have two items, kind of a pop-up timelines, time sensitive, but I, but certainly there's enough money tied to these things that, uh, we, we ought to collect and make decisions. Okay, sorry for the small print there, um, this is curb and gutter on a hundred and four street, I'm sorry, Richland Avenue. And essentially we had some comments, Anne Flying Smith, who's a, uh, top-notch engineer who lives along that road, brought it to our attention that the rest of that community, if you will, that, that neighborhood, would like to see curb and gutter all the way. Now, I'll remind you in the design, and maybe you forgot or whatever, but there is a curb there from a hundred and six, if it comes down the hill, curves around, there are a lot of water that gets mixed up in there. And there's some pipes that come off of the, uh, Comus, uh, property to the, which would be the, from the northwest flowing southeast, okay? And that gathers a lot of water, there's a, somewhere a little creek runs along that property to pool up water floods. So part of our, we're going to fix that, essentially in the design. Well, that includes some curb and gutter in that, around that curb, all the way up to their property, they have a drive, think about it, drive and then just right past that anyway, okay? So we have fifty-four hundred linear, your, your feet, sorry, and that's about twenty-five dollars a linear foot. So in a sense, we need about two hundred thousand dollars added to the price tag of this particular project to put in the curb and gutter. The recommendation, if you will, is the, uh, layback curb. So essentially if you go up in the new development on Highland Ridge, you'll see that, you'll see that in a lot of residential areas. This is, uh, this is somewhat being built at thirty mile, it is being built at thirty miles an hour, somewhat like a residential street. I think, you know, there's several houses along there, it's envisioned to be developed along the roadway. Bigger lots, however, there's big, those lots, if they sold off, that's when we will accommodate a number of houses. So the thinking, the engineering is, we put the layback curb in, so it's not a hard edge curve, right? It's more of a layback. And you go residential areas, you'll see that, there's even on Penn Street, there's a mix of it here and there, okay? So the, the recommendation, it'll carry the water away, we're not putting in pipe. And the reason that is, there's a lot of roadway in there that's going to get into people's, you know, it's going to get into people's property, you know, lateralized and be very expensive. And by this design, we can carry the water to those cross drains that were replaced. Because part of that road's problem is it just loves the water, it's been the road in the way and that's what, because the cross drains across the road are in very poor condition. That's already part of the project, the sidewalk is already part of the project. What we're adding here is these layback curbs, they're more of a, because that is a, uh, a connector, not a collector, or a stereo road, it's a connector, okay? Almost a residential, so think of it that way. But what benefit of the layback curb, in addition to carrying the water to the drains, uh, it will eliminate some of the major grading that's going to get into these properties and really the tree and some of this. We need to really work with this, maybe eliminate some need for extensive grading. So you have the roadway, you have, you have these easy things, and we always think of these, you know, we don't take, but every once in a while, as we talk about ninety-eight street, the grading sometimes takes property, right? And so we're trying to avoid that the best that we can. So essentially it carries the water, we will still have the sidewalk, instead of a five-foot, if you have a hard edge, uh, curb, it presents a five-foot, uh, green space between the curb and sidewalk. This is just for me, a green space right through there and then the sidewalk. Uh, and again, I mentioned the hundred and six street curb to Richland, we're going to put it there anyway, because that helps control that water from just going right up to the exposed property. So we recommend, uh, that linear feet is at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand, uh, in, in the remagers, we think the, uh, labor and some of the other engineering costs related to it. Uh, we have, that has a balance of, uh, that account has two point nine milliavolat in it. And today, we've invested about sixty-six thousand on that particular project. I'll remind you, that's the same fund as Kansas Avenue and that hundred and ten street project. If you remember, that was going to be one point three million dollars, we can spend near that. That's why we have this, uh, abundance of cash in there. And we will substitute this money for another project once these are done, because we can only spend it on these particular projects. So then we'll substitute it for other maintenance projects, we can, or whether we dedicate those work. So, uh, overall, oh, hold on, and I thought I included that, but in a sense that, uh, this is, maybe I didn't get that on the slide yet, I'm sorry. Uh, this project is one point six million dollars all in, and that includes a few hundred thousand in contingency. So this will add about two hundred thousand to that, so it's going to push one point eight million dollars overall. So we're going to replace all of the cross range, uh, fifty-four hundred linear feet of curb and gutter. And it will replace the entire road and then, uh, building over later from the hundred and six.
So maybe a twenty-five year road.
I, I, that is absolutely benefited the engineering, they, they, they were okay with not doing it because thirty mile an hour road, the condition of it right now doesn't have that in there. But if, if we have the money, they strongly encourage us to do it, we clearly have the money, this is. Absolutely, uh, we will just simply, you can put this on the record that you approved the addition of the curb and gutter. It, it's going to be around that two hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, if somebody would just make a motion to have, have me, uh, authorize the city engineer to carry it.
Oh, you want official?
Yeah, that's.
Motion from Councilman Bishop, second from Councilman Schreiber, will the first please call roll?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Thank you.
Since we're talking about this.
Oh, please.
That was informed by, uh, the residents when you're coming down and you make the turn right at Richland there. The first two homes, their laddles are going to be under the side.
Now, they're in the front yard, but it's close now, so that's what we're avoiding in some of this is that we, if we grade too far, we're in the laddles, which is, which is a problem. We ended up on ninety-eight street, which cost over a hundred thousand dollars. So we, we are purposely, purposely out of the, you know, to keep them out of those laddles. They're in good shape, number one, one of them's fairly new, so, uh, we think we can avoid it, we, uh, they've measured three times and, uh, they've, they've done their due diligence on this particular piece. Because it's very frustrating to suddenly have to replace things that you didn't know were there that you can. Yeah, absolutely, they're, they, we know they're in the front yard and we, so they're on, that would be, uh, property's on the south side of Richland and they're close, but this keeps us out of it. I'm, I'm hopeful. Okay. Excellent. Item number two for me, Mayor, thank you, what we have is a hundred and four street sidewalk, extension phase two. And we've talked about this, when we talked about phase one, we authorized phase one, we have completed phase one. During fifty-five percent plus of the construction, we were awarded a cost share hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars award from K D O. Now, the obstacle to that was we were fifty-five percent in construction. This is a construction award and therefore, since we were too far in it, we can't use that for phase one as reimbursement. But they approved on, on. But they've approved, on, on principle, that we can use it for phase two, which goes from Metropolitan to the north end of our current sidewalk. And then, on the east side, the cemetery side, and it goes north to Edge Hill Road. Now, if you look at that terrain, it, you'll see that the cost difference between phase one and phase two is, is legitimate, if you will, because the terrain is different. And it looks like some of the straight shot, we have, right, we have driveways across, we have the ditch, you know, the drainage ditch, and then we have some rightaway that we have to fire. Of course, right here, the cemetery don't, but it's gonna take some grading and a little bit into some yards and that sort of thing, and we have to manage the water. So there's some challenges to it, so let's start with, we knew it was gonna be expensive, more expensive than the first phase, so we went out to, to Mark, and they have this, uh, uh, transportation funds that are, are set aside funds that would address things like pedestrian mobility, sidewalks, not necessarily cars, right, so something different. And so we did, uh, request that fund, if you look on this, on your slide there, that Mark TAP fund request, that's somewhat our federal request, all in, seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight, that, I'm sorry, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, almost seven-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand to sort of it, uh, was the request. In that request, we said, hey, the city's willing to pay three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from our money as a match, and then the, the other funds would be that four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, okay? If the city did this ourselves, which is where we started originally, we already said, engineering gives us a high-level idea of what this is, the cost, they think that's around that seven, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar mark. So you kinda see where we are now. We received notice that, uh, they've recommended us for funding, but their proposal is what you're seeing in that next, uh, section down below, that we requested, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. They, uh, want to pay two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand of that, while the city pays, uh, uh, five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars of that for a three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollar project. So this is one of those times where they said, hey, you can have some funding, we just can't go all in for it. That's, that's essentially, and this happens quite a bit in this group, our, our, our cost is about that three-hundred-and-seventy thousand. Now you say, why in the world can we build it for three-seventy, but we ask for seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, right? Well, well, that is all the layers of things that have to go into these federally funded DOT projects. So we have a lot of KDOT interaction, you know, with all these regulations, not to say that we're skipping on them when we do it ourselves, but there's just not so many layers. And one of the big layers is, eight hours a day, if they're working, we have to have inspectors on site. And you saw that last proposal, and with this average inspection rate per hour is pretty expensive, so it really adds up very quickly. Now you go back to the cost share award, this is also a KDOT project, there are a number of regulations, we do have to have inspections and things like that on there, but it may be worth doing some of that. Not to the extent of this kind of federal money layered in, but there are some regulations that go with that, to get that particular money. Now, what we have, in a sense, we're gonna get a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which you may end up spending out of pocket, four-twenty-two or more. It just depends on, uh, you know, if, if, how much, uh, of the inspections that we're required to do. It's all about somewhat, when we're bidding the project, if we get good bids, like phase one, we're just really surprised, uh, Kansas Avenue, really surprised, right? So if we get good bids, that, that's, we're not gonna be up that high. And, and, and then some of these added layers will cost us so much, and the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand really means something. So we're, if you think about it, we're about that three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars to build that north section, phase two, from Metropolitan to Edge Hill Road, along the east side. That came the rightaway, uh, construction easements, right of entry, all the things that goes with attorneys and engineers, pre-construction, all that three-hundred-and-seventy thousand. With the potential of getting a hundred-and-twenty-five of that back, uh, after the construction, it's a reimbursement. Again, there are layers enough that may cost, it may be just worth us doing it ourselves without that particular piece, and we hate to turn back money. But the thing with it is, sometimes there's, you know, there's a cost benefit to it, and that's kind of what I'm asking you is, I would recommend that, it's not a great idea to turn back any money on these projects, but in a sense that, do we wanna pay five-hundred-and-fifty-three, five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars for a project? And I couldn't even fathom that we were bidding in for seven-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, it doesn't make much sense for a project, we simply did less than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so that's hard to swallow there, uh, I don't know what to recommend to you, is that how you want to spend your money, what's your policy, what do you want me to do? And again, there may be a little bit of consequences to returning money to Mark, but there are other projects that he could do, and clearly they could give us all of it, so there's a lot of competition. So they wouldn't mind, we have a good reason to do it, and then, then the next, we do that, the next piece is, do we want to pursue the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand and the regulations that that comes with? Because again, we can do this by some, but probably not under KDOT. It just is, there's a lot of different things, so timing, uh, what the real cost will be, we have the funding ourselves to do this and complete the project before, once again, before, uh, about the same time school starts, we'll be off that street. So those are some considerations.
So if you understand me correctly, the federal, the Mark funding, the bureaucracy and red tape nearly doubles the price and expenses this year, so that would be, I, like, to me, I'm thinking that's out. KDOT funding, it looks like, or the, the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, it might cost us fifty to get seventy, worst case scenario, based on this. So that's still in that positive for the city with a hundred-and-twenty-five, I think that makes more sense, like, skip the Mark funding and all of the federal bureaucracy, but a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand that we already have going, that, I'd like to, um, to be managed of that.
Council?
Would you like to see a little more effort on the sidewalk down here for, for southern people, maybe talk with KDOTs if they're doing this up there in rural, why can't we do something down here, um, along Thirty-two Highway?
Well, do you mean with KDOT up there, just for clarification, you mean they're granting it, you mean?
KDOT funding, state money, I mean, the sidewalk on Town Lane, that, I noticed grass was growing over, I didn't see where the snow was cut off of, there was snow falling, I never see anybody walking on it, I'm sorry. But I see bicycles and people walking along Thirty-two Highway. Why can't we focus on that, you know, for the southern residents, get to some of the places they need? I'm not in favor of the sidewalk north, yet, maybe in the future, but not now.
Just to give a little insight as well in my behind-the-scenes, if people don't know, I have been in touch with KDOT very recently to follow up on rightaway along K Thirty-two to bring about sidewalk access. Um, that would bring the state out from Fourth Street to the Dollar General and possibly improvements to enhance safety to cross K Thirty-two, because that's not at the standard right now. Um, they were waiting on some people to get back, and it's not gonna get back with me. Um, but just to bring a little query, is that K Thirty-two is not our property, it's, we can't do anything along there without through that permission? But those wheels are turning, they're just slow turning, because it's used to stay, this particular property is all I first saw, right away, and so it makes it more simplified for me, maybe.
Well, like, the one thing that some kind of wheels need to turn on that highway, because it's turned into a total terrible eyesore, anyway, from Western Edwardsville City Limits in the corner, it looks like crap. And I'm saying for, they're dumping rock off of their trucks all over where a hundred-and-eighty street is, there are potholes, the highway is torn to pieces. If you go north, the seven, on Seven Highway north on Thirty-two, there's rocks where they slid off the side of trucks, and nobody's taking care of them. I know that's Bonner Springs and that's KDOT, but we drive that, that's one of our main access points between here and Bonner Springs, or K, uh, Kansas Avenue and Seven Highway. First of all, we have to go do our shopping, because we have nothing in there, that's where we have to go, on those days. And that's why I think it's important that we consider pedestrian traffic and some more bicycle traffic for a safe access to get to where we can actually do our shopping. And that's, that's my opinion entirely, and I'm not gonna change that.
Yeah, the only comments I have, and I appreciate the feedback, on, on Fourth Street sidewalk extension, that's what, so, not the Dollar General, not, not some of the business sidewalk, is we, we have already done some work on that. Our new PEC engineering is gonna be one of the first projects, give us an idea of, of what the pre-construction cost will be, and there you'll be able to make a decision whether you wanna fund that in the next year or the next year after, sometimes, and then you'll have enough idea of, number one, the first thing you need to do is pre-construction engineering, right? That's how you determine then, what the rightaway costs are, who to, who to work with, that sort of thing, whether or not the intersection has to be improved, right, or those lights are out of it. And so we kinda know on top, our head and other suspects for sure, but this isn't the way you know these things, and then you can make a informed decision with council, because they can't go spend twenty-two thousand dollars just out of it, right? You, you have to have some information, right, to back it up. So, so this has been on our radar, it's been spoken, led by you, sir, which is fine, but we have done some work on it, and then this, this is our opportunity to add our new city engineer, to have them take a, a look and get a perspective on that, and have them go with that, it will present something to you, and then you can decide from there how to then steer the staff on what's the next step.
I think that we need to have a story from K Thirty, or from KDOT before we spend, then you know money, before you spend city money on it, to make sure they're amiable to us having them there.
Yeah, and staff has direct contact with some of the people that could help make that decision, so we can do that as, as a kind of a collective effort. Yeah, but what we're talking about now is a hundred-fourth street, uh, it's been, uh, certainly awarded, and so we have to make a decision, or heard, uh, from the mayor anyway, that, you know, mathematically, business-wise, it's not a great decision to, to invest five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand just to have offsetting, uh, ex revenue from, from this grant project, the TAP funds. And that, there is high level of interest to go ahead and, uh, submit to the cost share program that we do want the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and that we need to submit a plan with that, which we will do. And that plan is a hundred-and-fourth street sidewalk extension phase two, uh, Metropolitan north to Edge Hill Road, and that, uh, we will just go there, that's, that's what I mean. That's a, a commitment of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand from the state, so I'll need some approval to make that. I would like to, we're just reading it into the record, so it's all clear.
Do you want the cost share, we're doing that from the four twenty thousand dollars?
I think right now, if that project's at three-seventy, you will get reimbursement for whatever the construction cost is. So three-seventy is what we estimated, engineers' estimated cost of three-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, okay? So that's pre-construction, which is not reimbursable, none of that, so in a sense, whatever the construction cost, we, we can get reimbursed up to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So we won't know the total all-in and the offsetting revenue from that until the end.
That's gonna be expensive, that's, that's right.
Yes.
It, it's not gonna be three-hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, at this point, we haven't had an engineer, so that's, we haven't spent any money on this other than to get the high-level stuff so, so that we could, from the engineer to the city engineer, so that we can make applications. So these are projected costs, not absolute by any means. So with any project, you have variables, right? Like a drainage problem, you suddenly cut down a tree and there's a drain bolt there that we, that we should have known, but we didn't, right? So we had to go fix that, and we had to build a wall, those are the things on the first phase, right, that we kinda, kinda clogged with, but, but those are chain orders, and it could be a four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, but you get a hundred-and-twenty-five of that back if it's related to the construction.
And I'm watching this field, I've had, I've seen quite a few people using that sidewalk, walking in and jogging and that sort of thing, I've been by there. Um, I was at the school last week, and as soon as I walked in, I had, I've been there twice in the last month or so, as soon as I walked in, I had people walking up to me saying, thank you so much for putting that sidewalk in, we use it all the time. Um, I think that's something that our city is really appreciating, our residents really appreciating investment back in our community, but they can see where their tax dollars are funded, and they're actually able to use it. And, um, bringing our students especially a safer walk, this particular extension would bring at least two more neighborhoods to access that safe, uh, safe walkway to their school, which is pretty, uh, pretty valuable.
Yeah, and again, we don't, we can go out, we would have done this already had it been affordable at the time, right? And so we know where phase one is, now we're looking at phase two, but we can continue north to a hundred-sixth street and go south to Richland, south down the hill, right? Or, or north, then back around the hill there, and then you get the Richland sidewalk, and you can keep going east and west, you can go east from there, uh, all the way to Ninety-Eighth Street, north and south. So these, these things are thought out in this, in, in the somewhat pedestrian mobility programming, is that we can continue to do this in stages as we go. We expect at some point, a hundred-fourth street Town Lane, to be have curb and gutter, so then you have the sidewalks, and sidewalks are put in place for that curb and gutter to be well-positioned right along that sidewalk. So, I think in phases, we just, you know, the next five, ten years, we'll have a really good plan, we'll be back right on, we have to start somewhere.
And you need to know by the end of this month, that it will be at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Um, well, yes, I need to submit to them, like, after this meeting, I need guidance on, and it sounds as though there's some support for us to commit a plan that we are going to move forward with funds we already have on hand to spend, uh, upwards of, you're, you're looking at three-seventy to four-hundred thousand, and then on chain orders and things, to build the sidewalk, that's phase two. And that, that construction cost, that will be a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars reimbursement, and that we will say, thanks, no thanks, for the TAP funding that I'm on.
Where's the money, the other money, where's it coming from?
Well, that's originally ARPA funds, from, uh, that's city ARPA funds, yes. I'm sorry, again?
This phase, where's the money coming from?
Yeah, ARPA, yeah, remaining funds of the ARPA.
What was the money then left in there?
Uh, it'll cover that, uh, what, essentially what we have to do is, was, was, the payment comes out of the streets, uh, special street fund, and then we just move that money over. And it, it's, it's around that three-thousand, three-hundred thousand dollar.
That's all we have left in ARPA?
Yeah, it's, we've had, if you, just, if you recall, we did the Softrow project with nearly two-hundred thousand dollars of that, uh, the sidewalk, all of that, and another, I think there was another sixty thousand of, of project management software included in all of that, so those have added up. The, uh, originally, uh, we would have had no trouble at all, uh, with the phase two all at once with the phase one, uh, however, remember it was ninety-eight thousand? Our first engineer's estimate was ninety-eight thousand dollars for that entire stretch of phase one, but it's actually worth double that, you know, we got the cost of that.
Well, if it's double what this estimate is, where's that money coming from?
Well, that's, again, when they do, we, we'll be able to make that decision, once, once you decide here, the next phase I'll have before you is the engineer coming forward and saying, this is what we need to do, the actual engineering, so that's next. And then, then that will be the piece where they, they'll capture all the rightaway, they'll capture all the cost, uh, you know, construction design, all the things that, that they will plug into the absolute, the kind of the project estimated cost. So that's the next piece that you'll see, and you can decide those things as you go. Okay?
Of course.
So we're committed. Yes, what you're saying to me is that, I'm gonna tell the state of Kansas, we're gonna move on phase two, and we want our hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and at that time, we're reimbursing cost. Right, either way, they're gonna give us a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand as long as we spend that much in construction, okay, so there's your offset. So in a sense, I need them, I need to have a project, otherwise they'll have to release the money to another project. Right, yeah, we're, that's what our time frame is, they gave us to, this, this mid-December, to put a, uh, a request together about the next phase of, of the project.
Over.
Right, and you're, and you're asking me to withdraw from the Mark grant. So the state with cost share, intend to build phase two, and you can always, you can always change your mind, of course, okay? But what I need to say to them is something real, right, I don't wanna say, well, we're kinda thinking of it. So your commitment now, which is your commitment from before, is we apply for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, we were awarded that. So now they've said you can move forward to phase two, and that's what you're saying, I'm gonna write a letter to them that says phase two is gonna be constructed, just as I explained. And then, after construction, we will ask a reimbursement of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, which was our cost share.
So if you're looking for a motion, it would be something like, um, approval of moving forward with the Fourth Street sidewalk extension phase, phase two, with the city match through KDOT, but withdrawing the Mark application.
Yep, I think that would work, we're gonna do that, yep. Yep, as stated, that'll work too? Yes, as stated.
We have a motion from Councilman Adcox, the second, and Councilman Schreiber, will the first piece call?
Bishop. Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Okay, I think we're ready for the one seat.
Resolution number twenty-two-four sixteen, is that correct?
The motion from Councilman Malat, a second, from Councilman Schreiber, will the first piece call?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, did you have anything else for the city manager?
I do not, thank you.
Um, we're to, Councilor Fox, uh, Councilman Mullen, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'd like to commend the city manager and staff for doing this, because that's what I'm trying to say. I'd like to wish everybody a good day.
Councilman Bishop?
Yeah, but is there, do we have a, there, I know what, you can see what you're saying, they're talking about it right now, they have to spend their ARBA funds before they get here. We don't have to do that.
No, it's, it's not, unless they have a state sketchy which says that they do, it's actually, you, you, uh, designate those funds, right? And then, then they spend it, your, the absolute money has to be spent by the end of twenty-twenty-six.
I mean, and they have the staff to do it. So, that's what they said on the news.
Oblig- it's called obligation, and so that, that's what part of that.
I'm going to build from my truck.
I, I appreciate their written responses, I think their superintendent had them very responsive. He's just trying to manage a problem, and so he's been responsive, and they, they committed to hiring the sweeping company and then buying a sweeper of their own, renting it out, and they got it, it should be on site, but they've been using a new one. I'm sorry, again, bought to, it's, we're, yeah, so, uh, I understood that was going to be last week, but again, they, that's what they committed to doing. So far, they've done those things, but every other truck that runs in and out puts it right back on the road, so it's, it's going to be a challenge. But I, I will say, give them at least response.
We need to send a letter to the person in charge of all that, saying, hey, don't be using Skids their bucket because it takes the very top layer of the asphalt out and then looks through. They'll come and test it if they're. So like that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Councilman Malat?
Yes.
Uh, in October, I had requested some investigation on what the signs were gone out of.
Have I done anything? Yes, I've done something. Uh, no sign because we don't know where the sign, what it said, or where it even went, including, uh, I'll, I'll cite her name, Connie Henry, who has a broad history. She says, I have no idea, and maybe if I remember right, wasn't sure that there was ever that sign. I think there was, I don't know, right? But it's so not memorable, and nobody knows what's happened to it, so I don't know if it's been, it's certainly not in recent years been altered or what.
I think there needs to be rules and regulations, because, uh, I trust people, but I intend to, uh,
Yeah, I think it's a big, I think it will come from other states and everything else. So the rules and regs already exist in written form? It should, huh?
Yes, it is.
So we just need to get that. But I, I was going to ask if I needed to draft something that was, but if there are any policies, I think.
Well, and, and from my knowledge, that, when you handle that with your families, they get that information. But to hear it, you know, there's visitors that come that don't get that information, I'm saying, so. I, I, I agree, it does need to be there because there is several people that come in there that.
I was just, I'm going to ditch rules and regulations if we already have them.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think that, that information, it's not in any ordinance or resolution that I could find. So in, you know, it's about the time, but if you're talking about what flowers you can put out, what decorations you can, decorations you could put on the grave site, that sort of thing, uh, that's what you're asking, you can post it. So we, we'll have to, we have a pamphlet, I think, that describes some of that. Uh, so the first process, very quickly, CPPS board should be apprised of that. They should make a decision that then to say, recommend we do this, the style and things, and then we bring that to you, and then you vote on whether or not, number one, you want that money spent on that, and you approve the desire.
So could, um, maybe getting a better agenda, uh, for, maybe, and they have that.
Yes, you'll help us, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was a mystery.
It's not.
So the, the, the. The city council.
On that same note, I have visited who is at, I think I mentioned it very accounts, maybe, on the back, just here, about Bonner Springs, it's got a, just a beautiful thing at the entrance to the cemetery, it's got a map on it. And it's got a place for, I think it's a place for families and that kind of thing, you've been there probably. And I, as I said, probably, I think if they were to do something like that, you know, where you could see what the plots are, and, 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 I think of what they're. Somewhere else. I just think it's something that we should study. And make that cemetery a beautiful entity.
That's why I'm. That's what I was going to say, maybe the city council could direct the, um, CPPS board to, you know, provide recommendations on beautification, maps, and rules, regulations, update so that there's kind of a refresh of that, so that they have some direction.
That's kind of a, kind of a good. But it's a, it's a definite, it's an asset for the city. And, you know, I think that in the past, the, the plots have been so cheap in the past, the parts have been given up already. If there was people coming out, they'd buy plots just because they're so cheap. And this is what they're having now, it's ten to fifteen, and it used to be like sixty-five dollars.
Well, they were, you know, you're right with that. Yeah, wow, wow.
The prices are coming up now, so they're not selling, I was fast, because people, strangers, but I think that asset that we have back up there, I think we need to really, keep that, keep that.
So is it a wish of the council, then I go back and direct staff to then, uh, put all these in the CPPS board, uh, these rules, and maybe something of a mapping. Beautification overall, as part of their agenda. Yes, council, is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor explained, you know, he's trying to tell me about the KDOT, you know, have the, you know, being in any kind of sidewalk passing way from the fourth street to, and I just, I say Dollar General store because that's where ninety percent of people live. But even all the way down to where the D station, and I think that there needs to be some kind of safe pass in the way for the rest of the community to get there. And I might just be out of my mind entirely, I live on that highway, I grew up on that highway. I was almost out of control with track, truck traffic for those three years, it's amazing, there are, for rush hours, but the trucks, ninety percent of the time, it's speeding, I don't know how many tickets are written down there. But I think you could probably fill your ticket book out pretty quick if they're close to, too high. So that's my opinion, and I would appreciate if the rest of the community would kind of sign up with me on that. The highways, turn them into a dance, it was originally all the Lewis and, you know, call about it, scenic highway. It was titled that, and the city campus all the way to ours, and just not live enough for that sign. That's, that's an older guy's opinion.
Councilman Schreiber?
Um, I'm going to piggyback off of Councilman Malat's comments about the sidewalk, because I think we've been diligent, um, very thoughtful of him because if anybody's been to the gas station, that those topics we see before and we just feel, we see that hardship these people have to go through. Um, but to piggyback off the heavy traffic, this speeding trucks, that's what scares me, if it's even viable for a sidewalk to own that highway. So before we spend any money on that, let somebody to contact KDOT to see if that's doable. If not, then maybe the P E Cs create.
Yeah, there are other alternatives.
Sure.
We already know what they are.
So on the side of that, you, you just, just far off. Your efforts, uh, the, uh, project, your projects take years.
And be a lot of work, but I'm not speak.
But it's a, um, I think something that is needed, or a lot of, uh, something that's. Um, I have another question, do you remember, remember sitting in a full meeting, what was Dusty, Dusty? I remember when Dusty was here. He was going with that project of locating the manhole covers.
Yep.
Was that ever completed?
Yes.
Was it completed?
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily, I mean, we commissioned it for P E C.
Oh, okay, so.
Super mapping, manhole mapping, that kind of stuff.
So when projects like the sidewalk that maybe, you're not going to be surprised if it's, oh, there's a.
Better go to these spots. It may not that be, that particular surprise, but you just know.
At least that project was completed.
Yes, yeah, they did, uh, there's, uh, there's an import.
I'm excited for the, it's, I didn't know it was coming here, I don't know.
It's been a quite a long time, and, and, you know, they, they're using interchange, but we, we talk about Pacers, that's what we get, but the other one's called PCI. So pavement condition index, and they're just different number systems, kind of the same accomplishment, which is rate your streets.
When it gets completed, I know that it will be a waste, um, but if there's a way that that somehow can be put out there for the public. I know the street is on the books to get work on, the instructions for it, and then these people down on white streets, they wait, our, our streets are worse to get. When there's something on that showing that studies shows, here's what works, that, that, I think it helps the public understand why that's the work on right now.
That, that staff totally agree with that.
When is that, when is that kind of?
This, this is a good way to show that you just, certain people live on a certain street, you're fixing, that's not what we do, right? So this will help us tell the public exactly why we're choosing that particular street over another street.
Correct. Those aren't everything.
Yep, and, uh, that's capital improvement plan and a part of that particular piece, and, uh, P E C will be assisting us on that, in one way or another.
And, um, serving on the CPPS board, you will, I'll take this information back for, for that. I don't think that's something that's out of line or too far fetched to get them, so. Um, mayor, student staff, all the departments, I couldn't even begin to list everybody. The Merry Christmas Tree lighting was an event, I've been to, I've been to so many, this was possibly the largest attendance I've ever seen, ever seen. The kids had a blast, there were so many activities, from the hot dogs to the cookies to the hot chocolate, it, it was fantastic, fantastic. And, uh, just thanks to all who made that happen, gave a lot of kids and a lot of people happy, it was, it was a nice evening, good gathering. So, um, thank you, everybody, everybody, I know a lot of organization was into that, a lot of help, and it was a big success. Um, I think that's it, Merry Christmas.
Councilman Adcox? Um, I just want to thank, as the department said, the city staff, the, our department, the sheriff's department, everybody that helped with the Merry Christmas Tree lighting, it was really good. Tom Hall especially, she just took it and ran with it, and did an amazing job.
Thank you.
I was going to start with Merry Christmas Tree lighting, I feel like we kind of, kind of covered that, it was a great event, a lot of people, thank you, everybody. Um, one thing that we added about was the lighting of passing gloves, um, for students that were involved in the tree, and, um, those were donated to their student family, obviously. Students are already benefiting from those, so I want to thank the community for, uh, really taking the effort to contribute to that. Um, I was hoping, just in gearing up for twenty-twenty-four, this is our last meeting of the year, um, I'm sure everyone will miss meeting for a couple weeks. Um, but I was hoping that, and you guys probably already have this on your agenda, um, that to get year-end reports as of December thirty-first for, um, like departmental budgets. How are we doing, uh, percentage-wise in our budgets, uh, where each of our funds, our fund balances by the end of the year? We don't need those stuff, they, but just in January sometime would be good just to know how we ended the year for actual numbers. Um, and then I thought it would be, uh, kind of, it was talking about how it helps for residents to know what's going on, um, answering a lot of the questions and, and results speculating. There's a couple of areas I was hoping, uh, we might be able to put information out to, um, citizen, our residents. One of those is a snowfall schedule, and so I was snowing this time in, if we, I know some cities have where you can track this, the cloud graph and stuff. If we're ever able to do that, I think that would be fantastic, but if we at least could publish, hey, this is kind of the, um, schedule we do streets in, this, just so people know what to expect about how long that, I, you know, just to give them an idea, I think that would be beneficial. Um, another is, um, I love the hundred percent street, I won't go into a lot of details here, but it might be beneficial to, uh, just put information out to the public. To me, it's kind of like, when certain things happened and, and just so they know, this isn't something that just came up two weeks ago, but, um, things have kind of progressed from the beginning. Maybe we just put some factual information out there to fill in the gaps. Um, and then for twenty-twenty-four, and how it would be important in January to talk about specifically our special sales tax fund, and having policies for that, maybe, uh, some goals for that, and that's our community. And then one thing that I was really excited that we, um, had in twenty-twenty-four was we actually started investing our money and having earnings, interest earnings on investment. And so I thought it would be a great idea to have council discussion in January, um, to just allocate that time to, to decide, okay, what, who would want that to go for that, or this new revenue coming with the city, maybe make a plan for that, or have some staff recommendations on, um, where we want to be diligently intentional with new revenue sources coming in. Thank you all again, have a Merry Christmas and a blessed year.